I'm getting what I can get.
Because there the audience is part of the meeting.
Yeah. I mean, I'm getting what I can get. And it gets Kevin and it doesn't get Steve, so.
Alright, okay.
Alright, so on the agenda, first I want to start off with just a basically what I normally would start off with when I was at work was a safety talk. And so we'll talk a little bit about the virus and what we're doing. Then the next point of order is to talk about the budget specifically with to make sure we've got enough money in River Road South to do what Steve is recommending. And then the third thing is for us to work on our questions and answers that we've just gotten copies of so that we can have our talking points for tomorrow's meeting. Okay? So that was the intent. My thinking is an hour roughly.
Good.
Okay, so the first thing, so it's been two positions that I hold with what's going on now with getting the town informed, both on the deputy EMD side and then also with the chair side from our board as we mentioned before has the financial and legal aspects of what occurs. I've been practicing in daily conferences with MACE, which is basically upper valet organization. It's the incident command center that's up and running. It's not 24/7 yet, but right now it's operating 12-hour days in Lebanon. Margaret goes to those meetings in person because the phone call-in can be difficult to hear. But with that, that's sort of, that's on our collective, just like in any incident command, that's where everything's kind of coming down from. And so they're getting their information from DHHS, which is Department of Human and Health Services.
New Hampshire.
Mm-hmm, New Hampshire, yep. And also using the incident command system that's set up out of Concord with tracking the events and what's going on. So as we all know, there's been a tremendous amount of information coming from, be it Dartmouth, be it from DHMC, be it from the public, be it from DHHS, be it from the CDC. And so when you try to kind of get your arms around all those things, make sure collectively we're basically on the same page, this is the format that we're doing. So with that, yesterday, there was a special of call-in phone conference at 10:30. It appeared to me that was primarily done for the media. And the takeaway, and it was sponsored by DHHS. The takeaway is that they're not calling it a public health incident at this time, but they're recommending all the preventative measures. And so sort of what that's really saying in so many different words is we're not quite to the point where we want to officially, from a state perspective, roll out the fact that we want to start to do more social distancing, which means basically shutting down churches, schools, universities, big meetings. That may be coming, but they're not there yet. They haven't. It's sort of what I drew up on that board and had that little, what's your trigger item to go from this level to the next level where I've got social distancing? And so I think we're right approaching that going from the first stage to the second stage of response. So that's drummed up a lot of conversation between Kevin Patterson and Margaret and Michael Hensley and myself with the city town meeting. And even as of this morning, you know, it's been kind of going like this. So Kevin's learning just in case, for some reason, they do, the state does, decide to go to that next level, what he can do legally as far as moderator. Right now, though, we're planning on having town meeting. That's the executive summary. We're going to do the same precautions that the schools put in place. Kevin's working with Patty to what I call enhance some of the precautions. For an example, you know, when we pass around the boat box, get rid of the Christmas paper, paper wrapped ones, as nice as they have been historic and as much as we are attached to them, and to use plastic ones that we can basically wipe down. And actually, when you go to pass them around, actually just have the one person, so it's not getting through a bunch of minutes. We're going to do our best to try to set up the room to give as much distance as possible. And then I'll talk with, between Dina and Patty as we.
You know, you could have no transmission if nobody said anything at that meeting.
That's one, yeah, if they didn't cough and they didn't say, yeah, that's one way.
Nobody agreed.
So, yeah. So with that, we'll probably put out just a real quick brief that does the most important thing in that lets folks know that if you're sick, please stay home, as high as it may be. That's probably going to be the biggest help that we can do. So that's that. Any quick questions on that directionally?
So we're still setting up at 5 o'clock?
Yes.
We're wiping things down today?
Yes, yep, yep.
Very good.
Even Michael thinks that that's a little bit overly preventive because the virus itself, as far as its longevity goes over the 12 hours, is going to be extremely diminished. But we'll still do it. Because that's, basically, you know, we're using the school's facility, so we'll follow their protocol.
Yep.
Okay? Okay, so the second thing is specifically Steve, on River Road South, we spoke.
I'm going to recommend that obviously the cheaper option, but the cheaper option for River Road South is $284,365. Do you want to know specifically the tonnage or you're okay with that?
I'm okay with that, Steve. It was really, really, this was, this meeting was really just to get ready for a town meeting to make sure that we had enough dollars in our piggy bank to be able to afford, if you will, your recommendation. And as I look back to my notes, we're at like $282. So I think for all intent purposes.
I'll work with them to shave that two off somehow. That's easier for everybody. I'm sure I can.
You know, or we find the two. You know, I mean, it's not, I'm not trying to get to where we've got to nail it that close. I just wanted to make sure that you were supportive of that approach. And that, you know, if you walked in here, for example, and said, hey, you know what, I really think I need to do instead of A for $284, I need to do B for $350, for example, making up a number. So if we needed another $75,000 to quote, do it and get substantially better longevity performance, then we would have a talk as a board whether or not we wanted to add that money to the budget.
I mean, obviously, I would like to do the most, I mean, the most material and the grinding and everything, but that's at $332. And I just, I just don't feel comfortable asking for that amount. Obviously, the more expensive option is the better option.
It's about $50,000.
But like I said, I just don't feel comfortable with that, you know.
It's unfortunate, we're in a position with our paved roads, money hasn't been appropriate on a regular basis over previous years to keep them at a level where.
And I'm confident because the paving specialist, Matt, will be several times and drove over everything, he's confident that the cheap one is, he said, all three of these solutions are good. They're not, they're not really skimping in any way, shape or form. So I'm comfortable, you know.
But we do have, you know, other critical issues over town.
Yes.
Prioritizing them and being aware that they're coming up in successive years. An awful lot of revenue has been pumped into special projects and perhaps, in my opinion, projects that could have been put off and the road's taken care of.
Okay? Judy?
Yeah, I was spending a bit of time, I was thinking about Goose Pond because that's the other one that came up at Little Town Meeting. And I'm not sure we could, unless it deteriorates dramatically further, I don't think we could do it this year. But we could look to rearrange the priority schedule if it looks like it's calling sooner rather than later. Right now, it's two years out.
When I did that schedule, that was my opinion, you know, River Road North is obviously, in my opinion, way worse than Goose Pond. And I was going to do Goose Pond that third year.
The third year, right, so we'll reassess that.
We're banking on your opinion.
Right.
I drove the other day up Goose Pond Road. The hill there really was not as bad as Dorchester Road, the state road.
Oh, not even close, yeah.
No, there weren't any hard crossings. And I was in a three-quarter ton truck that feels everything. But it is a shame that what's been redone and open for eight, seven, eight years doesn't get paved.
So let me just facilitate for a second. So the idea, the questioning was, do we think we need to add any additional funds or ask the town for additional funds tomorrow to do the one project that we've got planned for 2020, River Road South? What I'm hearing from Steve is he still feels as though that the $284 solution, $25 solution is a good solution. I mean, obviously, you spend more money.
Yeah.
You can probably do more things and maybe get some advantages, but given as what Ben said.
I agree.
Okay.
I think we don't, when we finish with that, I think there is something that we need to ask for more funds for.
Okay, we'll get to that, we'll get to that.
Right.
Could you pass that to Kevin, please?
So maybe the, maybe the.
I thought it was already addressed.
Doesn't need to.
Okay. Thank you.
So, no, so my sort of lesson learned, if you will, is come next year, we need to be, in the budget season, be learning about our projects now that we got them. And Steve, so you know, you've seen that slide.
Just do the update.
Well, we got to update them, but then get the, get the companies to bid on the projects so we've got firmer numbers. So we don't have to have a meeting like we're having today just to make sure we've got enough funds to do what we want to do. Okay, good. Once again.
So we're going with the $284?
Yes.
Okay.
So when we look at that slide, it's got the road projects that we presented at Little Town Meeting. We just had a quick discussion on whether we should rearrange the 2021 projects. The big ones, River Road North, Thetford, I think specifically, we're talking paving on River Road North versus Goose Pond Road. I heard from Steve that he's still of the opinion, his still, your opinion still remains, leave it as you initially proposed.
Yeah, I honestly, I think the only terrible section of Goose Pond is just that hill. It's not the entirety of the road. I think there's much more damaged footage on North Thetford Road, I mean, on River Road North than there is Goose Pond. I think you can wait, wait until.
So what I'm looking for here from the board really is just alignment to make sure that we're aligned in what we're going to present tomorrow. Go ahead, Judy.
Well, what I said was, I wouldn't change it, but we can consider tracking it to see if it deteriorates further and it becomes a situation that needs to move up. So for tomorrow, we're good, but we're going to keep our eye on it.
Yeah, I think you're wise in putting it that way in that really, this is project planning and it's trying to look ahead two to three years. Situations do change. And so I'm not trying to suggest that we're fully locked in stone, if you will, of having this to be in exact order and having that flexibility. But it, really what I did it for was to give us a sense for the fact that we can afford $200,000 to $300,000 a year worth of road warrant article, just as we've done in the past, and then try to get the prioritization and see if we've, what fits and do, can we, you know, might be one year in particular that we have to wait another year to save up another $100,000 of block grant money to build the Ford to do the project. But it gives Steve and I, you know, that capability to discuss with the board what we think. And so certainly as 2020 progresses, we can start fine tuning 2021, just as we discussed, before the budget cycle.
Yes.
And I'm not even sure what River Road North is going to cost yet. I kind of got a preliminary rough idea, but I may not even have enough yet, we don't know yet for next year for River Road North, so.
And so, you know, once we kind of get through getting organized for what we want to get done this year, before the budget cycle starts, we'll work 2021 to exactly that point.
Exactly.
So that we know where we're at and what we can afford to do. And then readdress to make sure it's the right priority, okay? Okay, so that was, so we're good there, Steve. That was the second part of the meeting that I wanted to have. The remainder was for us to work off of our questions and answers. Your homework was to look at the bullets or articles that you've been assigned to see if you wanted to add additional bullets so that we could make sure that we're all aligned in agreement. But before we go there, that's all I really had, Steve. And that's just, you know, anything else really pressing and then you're trying to get some stuff put on the road before it warms up, so.
Yep, yeah, I have nothing else. I know the R and D already signed the contract with us, so they just wanted to know which option we were going to choose. Like I said, I'm going to try and put off as long as possible. I'm waiting for information, you know, from Mike and the bridge and just it'd be nice to get the bridge done first and then sort of, there was no collateral damage to our fresh asphalt and so we'll go from there, but.
So we may talk a little bit after you leave about what I call fleet rationalization, you know, what we've had up here. But part of what's helping us with our questions and answers is seeing the questions that are put out onto the listserv. And so I don't know if you saw the one.
I haven't seen any questions.
So just so you know, so tomorrow, you should be prepared for the fact that we are going through sort of this fleet rationalization. We do have two trucks for sale. Because one of the things off the listserv was we sent out this spreadsheet that showed the replacement schedule, but they weren't quite satisfied that we didn't fully explain what all the trucks do and why they have to be replaced and.
Or how much you use.
How much you use them. The board's not prepared to answer that.
Yeah, so you want mileage and usage and.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'd have those in your hip pocket. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that you might prepare, if you will, for those types of questions tomorrow. Because we're going to, when it comes to that specific of how you use the fleet, if you will, all the equipment, it's going to come get directed to you, just so you're aware.
Right, that's no problem.
I mean, you know, who knows? I don't, I can't tell you exactly what to prepare for, but just sort of in your mind, that's one of the things that came up.
Everything will hopefully be brief so that that microphone's underneath my face as little time as possible.
Fair enough.
Yes.
Fair enough. Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, all set? Thanks, have a good day.
Thank you for that.
The, we need to talk about the EMS request.
EMS request.
An additional $10,000.
Oh, yeah, 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 sure. Good.
In her budget.
Let's do that.
Because this year, she didn't think she was going to need much funding.
Yeah, I think if I remember right, it's like.
Emergency man, management fund, not EMF.
I said MS.
EMS.
That's okay. So, so I think it's, you know, $26, $2800. Usually it's a little bit less than $3,000. I didn't bring my big notebook with me, but it's in that range.
It's, yeah, it's like $21.
Yep, so she had asked for supplemental $10,000. And I think it's probably appropriate to stand up at town meeting and ask to add $10,000 to that line in the operating budget.
Yeah.
Given the circumstances.
Because we just don't know.
We don't know.
What we might have to do, go ahead.
Right, well, I was going to say that when I talked with her, that was her dilemma. She was like, well, how much do I ask for? What do I end, who knows? So she sort of felt that $10,000 was a reasonable amount. And of course, if it's not needed, it doesn't get spent. So, I mean, it can be a separate, separate line line so that it's not just lumped in with her stuff, which she has to get, which she has plans for anyways, her $2100 or whatever it is. So we did that one year with an energy. There was a question about fuel oil costs, so we had a separate amount of money for energy use.
Emergency management, I believe this year is down to $1,360.
Year before was?
$2469. And the year before that was $3674. I think she was setting up the office.
That was the trailer, too.
Yeah, so it's kind of gone down each year. So $1,300, so I think you need probably 10 into that line. And she's not exactly a spender, if she doesn't need it, it's not going to, not going to go out and buy.
Right, well, it would be specifically for this, the.
Whatever response.
Whatever response, right, you know?
So.
All the, all this handicizer we have to keep buying.
$178, sign $178.
So what's the board thinking? Good idea?
Good idea.
Can I suggest we have it in a separate line, though?
Sure.
Just because then it doesn't get mixed in with what she regularly spends.
Yeah, no, that's really a very good suggestion, Dina, because over the weekend, at the federal level, there was a tremendous amount of money voted for response. And so one of the recommendations that's come out of state calls was to track your costs because we may, may have the opportunity to recapture those after everything is settled.
And I have already set up a special.
So instead of line 78, when you say, so instead of.
I'll just stick another one in there. We can do that or we can put it, you know, at the end by the, like we did with the energy thing, we put it away at the end, right before the total of the operating budget. Just sort of like.
To my mind, it would be nice to have it near where emergency management is. And I know that complicates a little because then it moves all the other lines out, but.
Okay, so that's, that's more of a, where we put it in for where we can see it.
Right, it won't, for the purpose of town meeting, it's not going to, you don't have to assign a line number. We just.
So could we have a motion to increase the town?
I'll, I'll second it.
Town operating expense by $10,000 to fund possible EMD requirements with respect to managing.
COVID-19.
COVID-19 or COVID-12. How's that for being wordy, Dina, sorry?
Well, that's all right, I got it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. So now just from a mechanic's perspective for tomorrow, seems like it'd be best for Margaret to put this to the floor.
Yeah, absolutely.
So will you let her, will you let her know?
Yep, yep.
And I anticipate she'll be able to get a second.
I would think so. I'm sure.
We'll see. Okay? Good, thank you for that. Anything else with respect to budget dollars?
Well.
Go ahead. I asked you, I asked you, I asked you get to respond, I just.
Because I did do my homework as assigned. I, I would like to propose that on Article 16, we acknowledge that there was a petition. It was filed much too late to give it any legal authority. Had 49 signatures. We did not double check for authenticity, but I think that's a moot point. And we should move to table the article so that we can spend the next however many months discussing it and looking at the public's opinion of what they want.
I get to drift to board your head now.
There you go.
So, just.
Short and sweet.
Yep, but just from a facilitation perspective, what I was wanting to make sure is that we didn't have any other dollar budget items. I don't think I heard any. And then I was going to start talking about the question and answer, which would have taken us to Article 16, but since you're there already, so no, no other budget dollar things. Okay, so we're good there. So we'll go ahead and we'll talk about the question and answer. You've got a copy in front of you, right? Since you started on 16, I was mostly listening. But your, your, your final point was that you're asking the board to consider, rephrase it again.
Well, acknowledging the petition and then consider asking to have this item table till next year's town meeting. And we would spend the year well-publicized select board meetings at certain points, talking to the different groups of people and their thoughts and. Relooking, we looked at those alternatives. We felt that the public knew what was happening, but certain segments of the public apparently did not feel they knew what was happening.
Well, it just, you know, it's difficult. We hear a lot of Monday morning quarterbacking, but the most advantage people can do is come to our meetings and just give us feedback. Because otherwise, you know, one of the difficulties of being select but not discovered is that we have to make decisions all the time. And often, there's not adequate public input to make those decisions.
And it's hard for a lot of the public to make Thursday mornings, so I get, I get all those, so I get all those points. And we'll talk about this to that point a little bit more in just a little bit. Mechanically, I'm looking at my subject matter expert now. Mechanically, what would the phraseology be that would be acceptable, if you will, for this board? If that's, if we do take on, so we talked about Passover. But that's not really, Passover.
Passover just means it'll come up later.
That means, yeah, right, you change in the order of it.
To table it.
Yeah, I would table it, yeah, that, that would be the best.
And the board has the authority, even though it's unasking?
Well, no, it would be a vote of everybody at the meeting.
Meeting only, only the meeting has authority. We don't have authority.
One of you could stand out, make the motion, and then it could get a second.
I see.
And then Kevin would put it to the public body at the meeting for a vote.
I see. Okay. And so obviously, since you've been thinking about it, you're supportive of that approach.
I'm sorry.
Okay?
I think it's only going to benefit you guys and everybody, even though you have talked about it quite a bit. But you're going to be able to have some public hearings and.
Sure. Okay. No, I'm there, Dina. I've only got one thought, and I'm just thinking it out, is talking it out. Let's say that we do this and that the motion passes and we do nothing with respect to final disposition. How does that impact the operation when we have the new road in service? What are we going to do in the interim? I just want to have that discussion.
My proposal, my thought would be that we have been very clearly told over several years that this road is unsafe for vehicles. We have a bypass, hopefully by summertime. And I believe that we can restrict vehicles on an unsafe road.
So we put up like the concrete Jersey barriers like we had during construction or something like that?
That would be my thought, yeah.
Okay.
For me to keep vehicles.
Heavy vehicles, especially, yeah, because if you don't, I mean.
People are going to drive on it.
Right.
No, we can't.
It was brought up at Little Town Meeting that, you know, the solution is Class 6 road, but that's not a solution because heavy trucks would use a Class 6 road or something.
Well, so will vehicles, so.
Well, and it's interesting, though, because you're talking about tabling this to gather information and look at options. That would be one of the options you would be talking about and gathering. And I would hope that that wouldn't be a quick split decision right away at town meeting this year until all the information is gathered.
No, 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 I, what I wanted this board, and it really is in conjunction with Steve's position, I just wanted us to be, have a quick discussion on what are the impacts of not having a decision tomorrow? That's all I wanted. Which way we go, obviously, we'll save that for more discussion. But the, am I missing anything? I mean, besides sort of the Jersey barrier solution, is there anything else that will impact us? That we'd have to deal with, if you will, if this, if this.
If it gets tabled.
If it gets tabled.
Well, I think you would have, if, if the article, as we proposed it, is voted down, you're still going to need to do something because you've got the new road. So I think we're being proactive and we're listening to the petitioners and Little Town Meeting and responding to that. And I just, but we also have that higher duty to protect the town. And that means making it so vehicles can't go down that road in the interim.
Is there any, I'm just, was there anything else? Was there anything else that we're missing that?
There probably is.
Well, I think that it would be beneficial to touch base with town council about this choice and then, and then what, what you might be missing prior to tomorrow morning.
Okay, so you're going to take that action, Adam?
Yes, sir.
I, I think we're pretty good, but Dina, I think it'd be good to double check that. Okay, so Judy, do you want to make a motion, please?
Sure, I will move that. We, at town meeting, Article 16, and we can ask to have this done. We, uh, at town meeting, Article sixteen, and we can ask to have this done early in the meeting, acknowledge the petition, and then request that Article sixteen be tabled and for further consideration at next year's town meeting.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Me too. Um, there was one, so, so just tell me the reason for bringing it forward and, and asking to move it up.
Oh, well, if we're going to ask to have it tabled and that means there's not gonna be any, or little discussion, or perhaps none, if there are folks that are there simply for that reason, which we would hope they're there for the whole town meeting, it's right at the end. Maybe it would be nice to have that discussion in the beginning, but we don't need to do that. I was just thinking that would be considerate.
Mm-hmm, that's sort of the moderators, or is it the town? The town decides if they wanna, but it's.
The people at the meeting that decide that, yeah. I mean, anybody can bring it up.
Sure, but then you can spend the whole meeting with everyone reorganizing their articles to the order that they want.
I wouldn't be surprised if somebody wasn't gonna bring that up anyways, what, even if you guys don't.
Oh, okay.
Because having it at the end of the meeting is a challenge for some people.
Well, with that, other things.
There was a, a Little Town Meeting that the crowd evaporated at.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I agree with you that it's high visibility, let's say, right?
On folks' minds.
And so, um, I'm, I'm okay with that, I just, uh, everybody could then stand up and start getting the ones that they want so that they can go to.
And they can, they can do that.
I mean, there's nothing to stop them from doing that.
They always enable to do that.
Okay, so I think what you're suggesting though is that we, the board, actually make that.
Yes.
Motion to the floor.
I believe that's.
Is that what you're thinking?
I think we should.
And whereabouts, do you think you wanna do that? At the very, very beginning?
I would do it at the very, very beginning because otherwise you start getting into all the others. They're in pretty good order, they flow one through the other, and then it's disruptive in the middle of wherever you are.
Well, and I, just thinking now, if it gets tabled, that's great. Um, but if for some reason a different action happens that you may need funding for, then, then you can do that in your operating budget.
Sure. Good, good logic, thanks. Okay, so, um. It was your idea, Judy.
Yeah, thank you.
Even though I was tasked with explaining that, um, article, I'm very willing to allow you to do this, or I will, as you choose. Your choice, it's really.
I'm happy to do it.
Okay, okay. Will you, um, just send an, an email to Kevin and let him know so he's aware? Just so he can get his mind around the fact of what we've decided, well, just so he's aware.
Yes, I will.
So, because he, he puts together his whole meeting and how he's gonna run it.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
And so this way he knows. Okay, so we're all good there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, let's see. Go ahead, Ben.
I've got all your thoughts.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna get through our business and then we'll see.
We'll have a chance to speak.
Maybe.
Maybe.
That's good.
And we've got, now, let's go ahead and get back to the, uh, the draft. And basically go line by line, and I know that some of you added some bullets, and so I thought what we do, you can see the few changes that I made. Do they show up at all to you, Ben, the ones in green, or I'll highlight them?
Yeah, I can see them, we got a black and green, red and green.
Okay, sorry.
No, I can see them.
I'll, I'll, I'll flag them. So just, um, Article three and four, Judy, any additions, any bullets that you wanna add on the talking points?
I think that's pretty straightforward, and I think we will have Mike Lundby there, and I'm sure he's gonna add some, and probably also, um, Rob Meyer.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, this is, yeah, I think it's good.
Okay. Article five, which is basically the APEX, um, I'm just gonna make another bullet for the, um, increase of ten thousand dollars to the EMD's budget.
Yes.
Beyond that, um, we do, so this is sort of a combination, Judy, you know? Even though I've got Article five, at the same time, there's probably gonna be discussion that comes up for our cost, um, saving initiatives. And so I think when it, I think that discussion comes about, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer, I'm gonna defer to you, if you will. Is there anything else, um, based on some of the feedback we've gotten off the list server that we wanna add? I mean, you might have a whole list of things that, um, as far as talking points, for the beach and the supervisor and the, and the lifeguards.
I.
You know, on, on these, you know, we didn't, these weren't, there was more to these than put this cost saving.
Sure.
And that decision made.
Well, then that, that might be, that might be the, the talking points that Judy adds.
I have something to add there, I don't, I don't think you need to redo this.
Okay.
But, yeah, I.
I'm just gonna put.
Expected to say something at Little Town Meeting, and it didn't really come up at Little Town Meeting, so.
So you're prepared?
Yeah, okay.
I'm just gonna put Judy's talking points as another, as a second. Okay?
Were you planning on a meeting later this week?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me. We can talk.
Because I won't be around Thursday.
We'll talk. Um, anything else on the APEX side, Article five, as far as, and talking points?
Budget was, I mean, that, we spent a lot of time on that refining it, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Okay, good. Article six, CRF funding?
Well, that was the other part of the budget that we spent a lot of time on. It is down, as you know, seven percent less than last year, but four twenty-five is pretty healthy. And we looked to the future funding as well, so I think that we can explain that. And in fact, it was touched on in the letter that went out to the community earlier.
Sure, so you're good?
So I'm pretty good with that one.
Okay, thank you. Article seven, the black grant, any?
Probably nothing, nothing.
Okay, Article six?
No, eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, eight? I, I did add, I did add more than what was said at Little Town Meeting, I felt like.
Yep.
That I, you know, need to add a little bit more so people can understand sort of what they're getting for, what they're, what they're looking at.
Yeah, that was hard to, it takes a while to record it around that.
Okay, I, I, I didn't have any, I'm not gonna do much more than that, unless asked.
I don't think you need to.
Um. I did have a thought, you know, the Corps of Engineers has a information package that they put together. We could print out twenty or thirty of those to be on the table on the way out if someone wanted more detail.
Yep. That's a good idea. Can we get maybe David to help Deena run those out and collate them with staples?
As she sees, as she needs.
I have a lesson on the copier, I'm all set now, it does it all. David taught me.
Deena, I'll send it, I'll send it to you so it's right up top here.
Oh, that'd be great, okay.
All this time I've been collating and hands stapling, and now the machine does it, what do you know?
Okay, Article ten, I think that's pretty straightforward. Eleven, I think, I think the, um, the one bullet there is one that we didn't make clear at Little Town.
Yeah, and I, I don't think we need to change this any, but, um, to further support that, there were a number of people after town meeting who said they didn't realize what they were voting for and they would have voted the other way, that they thought it through, so I think it was.
Okay, okay.
Those two bullets really cover it.
Give me just a second. Yeah, we probably could have laid that out a lot better. Okay. Article twelve, withdrawal from the CRF? I added, so Ben, I added the second bullet there, it says free fleet rationalization or reduction is ongoing. Just because people see a bunch of equipment in the yard right now.
Yes.
And it's ongoing, it's ongoing, and that we, we haven't gotten full alignment between the board and, and Steve's position, so that's, that's what this is all about, and so.
Steve will have to speak to the truck as he's, sure, made out specifications.
Sure.
I'll, I'll speak to the three, three-quarter ton truck, which is controversial.
Which is the maintenance truck, not highway truck, maintenance truck.
Not highway truck.
Right.
I should have made that bullet.
I, well, just.
And right.
Underline that.
And it's the same price as the, whatever.
Just about, half.
And the computer system, tell me more about that if I have to answer.
Um, we, um, are changing, upgrading all of our computers. Every five to seven years we upgrade. Because they get outdated, it's just sort of a.
Standard upgrade.
A standard, right. And it's all the computers, it's not just our office, it's the town clerk's office, the tax collectors, the assessing, planning and zoning, everybody's.
Didn't we have some software that was struggling to get updated and live on the old machines?
Yeah, we've had some challenges with Windows ten and working in conjunction with our other software programs, so it's time.
And, yeah, and it comes out of the capital reserve, I mean, we plan on that, so it goes in.
Right. We actually have a schedule.
Just like.
Believe it or not.
Just, just like, just like the trucks.
Right, it's a plan.
Okay, good. Article thirteen and fourteen, the theme of reimbursement. The only thing I added there on the second to last, the last lines was, and I, it, it would be good, Deena, if we fill in the blanks.
Okay.
So that we know what the CRF, um, value is currently.
Okay, yeah.
Um. So what I meant really was the, uh, the highway repair CRF.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So as we're replenishing it with a hundred fifty thousand dollars, it would be good to note.
Right.
Um, what the, what the balance is, right?
Right.
And then the same with the classified we have after you put the eighty thousand nine ninety-four into it.
Okay.
Okay?
Can I interject?
Sure.
This is of the place, last year at town meeting, uh, the trustees of the trust funds gave us an update as of like the end of February of the.
I have that, yeah.
Do you have that?
Yeah, so I'll look at those numbers and see.
And can I grab a copy of the endless meetings over? Because it, it changes what's in the town report, so that would be good. It reflects any payments that came in after the end of the year.
Oh, no, there were no payments after, at the end of the year.
Last year.
Because we made, there were last year, that's right, because we missed the cutoff and with this new investment company doing it, they're not, we, we can't make the adjustments like we used to, so.
So I'd still love a copy of it, but thank you.
That's fine.
Okay, so we're good?
Yes, thank you.
Article thirteen, fourteen, yeah? Okay, fifteen, for the moving the money that was dedicated out of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program? Ben, are you okay with those bullets, do you need more?
Yeah, and, and, it's just that, I'll probably just make the statement that just because we get free money to do a project we don't need to do, uh, doesn't mean that it's in the best interest of the town.
Yeah, I think the second bullet there, having been placed lower on the priority list after reevaluated, even though it was sort of free money, it just didn't, um, warrant being spent on a project that was more of what I like to call the nice to have versus need to have at this moment. When we've got somebody here that need to have us, that's sort of how I look at it. But however you see fit to describe it, Ben's.
Yeah, I'm stumbling, I'll look you up.
Well, that's sort of the idea of having these bullets, is that one, we can all talk to each other and make sure we're saying the same things aboard and thinking the same, in the same direction, but how we each individually do it, that's, that's all up to our own sort of comfort factor style, if you will. Okay, Article sixteen, I think we worked that one. Um, with that, I don't think we really have to go through all these bullets to get to where we're gonna go.
It depends on.
Where we end up, you mean?
Right.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but if, if we move it ahead, and you basically just lay out and say, based on.
Like to table it.
Based on the, um, petition that we received, based on some other feedback we've received, we are, whatever words you wanna use, willing to or open to, um.
Moving to table it.
To table it, and, and if we have to, doesn't, if that doesn't pass.
That fails, then we have.
And then we have to, if you will, um, defend Article sixteen as written, then we'll use these points.
And we're comfortable doing that, I just think it's a better part of valor to look to continue discussions, given what we've seen.
Sure.
Okay.
Article seventeen and eighteen, I think that's not gonna be two.
Hang on, thanks.
I think we're gonna capture that. Article nineteen, so you see I added, and I think this is a good time to sort of advertise.
That's a good point.
That we need volunteers to do.
The SLG Board does not plan July fourth program.
Well, it's like hint, hint, they need to get planning now, right?
But, you know, until I got on the board, I didn't know that. I assumed that the board took care of the Fourth of July, so, and that, no, so we're all close to this now. So we all sort of know how it works, but I don't think a lot of people, I think some people, I don't think a lot of people really know that it's not a board, okay, I know, Deena.
No, I'm looking at you confused.
I don't think there's, I don't, I don't think there's in the town, I think a lot of people think that the Fourth of July celebration is a function that the board, um, organizes.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised because.
Well, I mean, there was a committee for thirty years that did it.
Yeah.
And that's the change, is that that committee changed.
And if you've been around for a long time, you know that, but we've got a lot of new people, and they don't know how it works. And so this is an opportunity for Judy to maybe even explain that we had a committee, that last year it was hard to get a committee together in time, and so we didn't have the celebration. So if you're interested.
Volunteer.
Volunteer now, one eight, one eight hundred, Deena, and she can, and she can.
They just need to email me, that's right.
Exactly.
We can start a list all over again, but they need to get cracking.
Right, but that, so it's a good time, it's timely, right, to, to basically help, see if we can get people that wanna do it. Is my, so we're good with nineteen, I'm twenty? Is my statement correct?
This, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, okay. Um, Deena, I think you're still working Article twenty-one. If, you know, we, or, or no, we're clear that if it's not approved, the old definition will apply, that's, that's, we did clarify that.
Yes, I'm very clear, I clarified that with the town council and DRA.
Okay. Okay. Okay, um, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
Who's answering that, Kevin?
Yep.
And you know what the difference is?
Between?
If somebody asks you, they're gonna say, well, what do you mean, what's new?
Go ahead, teach me.
Well, no, it has to, it just has to do with the additional solar, um, and I forget what the photo, something, something. There's a something.
Photo, yeah.
So, see, you know.
Right. Oh, I thought maybe there's something else, I thought.
No, 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 it's just the expansion of additional. No, I'm just making sure, right.
Okay, oh, if someone asks, what's new?
Right.
What's the change?
What's the new definition, what are you talking about?
Okay. Um, Article twenty-two, we've got the energy committee folks talking about their article removals, we're good there. Uh, the Connecticut River Resolution for Article twenty-three. You know, at Little Town Meeting, Dave said, hey, you know, if you want, I'm on the Conservation Commission, or not Conservation Commission, the Connecticut River.
Joint Commission.
Joint Commission.
Blah, blah.
Dave Hewitt?
Yes, he is.
I thought it was Bill Malcolm.
Well, Bills are a rep.
Oh, okay, so it just, oh.
But Dave, Dave's, Dave's on the.
Because Bill had said he would speak too.
Yeah, either of those.
Okay. So either one, so maybe I'll put, maybe, maybe Bill.
Put them.
In case, in case there's additional questions, I'll defer to Bill or Dave, how's that? Okay. Okay, Article twenty-five, which we became aware of via email, so now we can talk about it a little bit. I added three bullets, and so I put CATV, so when I look at Norwich's town meeting and their budget, I think Hanover, Lebanon, they use a company, so you're, you're probably fully aware.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And CATV, when it started, at least in Hanover, they used a high school student who came in, set up the equipment, filmed, and physically was at the meetings, moved the camera and to whoever was speaking. And, I mean, it was, it was great. And as the years have gone by, Hanover now has permanently installed cameras. Two or three now, they used to have one, but now there's enough that everybody can be seen that's in the room and recording equipment, and as with all things, it's gotten more sophisticated and smaller.
Uh, you, you just, you just made me think of something, so this was on my to-do list today, since we started up before businesses opened up, sorry to interrupt you, but I noticed on Norwich's warrant articles that was three thousand dollars for CATV services.
Yeah.
But as you spoke, I think there's probably like this initial installation cost.
It, it depends on, I would guess now probably.
It's three thousand probably just to have the service for the year.
Each year, that's right.
So.
I think you need to get, yeah.
So you, if you were going to do this, I think you would wanna get at least one, if not a couple of cameras, and then probably someone to come in and operate, but maybe it could be as simple as turning a switch, but.
The suggestion on the list serve was that it would be stored on our website.
Yeah, so.
Now, video takes a lot of space.
Right.
And is that gonna, is that gonna exceed what we have for the weather?
I would have to check with our website people.
I'm sure that would also cost us extra, mostly CATV has its own website, and if you wanna see the meeting, go there and click on the meeting.
So it's all in that whole package.
Yeah, and that's part of what you pay for.
But that's what you need to get for a figure, because I think if, if this is gonna come up at the towns, of course, the town can vote to do this, it's really the board's decision, yes or no, to do it. Politically, you know, if everybody votes and says, yes, we want you to do this, well, that's probably the right thing to do. But I think in order for them to vote on it, they need a sum of money.
Installation cost.
Right.
Yeah, I agree, that was my homework, that I intend to take on after this meeting, to contact the company to find out what for the size of room that would take for them to install, so that, because you touched on some very good points in that if we do, if the town does build the system, then legally it is our responsibility to maintain those public records.
Right.
And it gets back to the storage issue, and a little bit I read off of the website for the local CATV people was they keep, I think it was like ten meetings fresh where you can.
Click on it.
Click on and find them, and then they go to archives, and so my only one question is, do they maintain those archives forever? And is that sufficient as far as maintaining the public record without it having to get saved on our server?
Yeah, and I think we don't wanna get it saved on our server, I mean, we, we're a little town, that's a huge cost.
Sure, yeah.
And even in Norwich and Hanover and Lebanon, they don't videotape all the meetings. They are usually sport or selectmen and sometimes planning board, but not all of them are.
But, so I'll, I'll keep working that to get that installation cost, cuz I want, if the town's gonna.
Roughly, yeah.
If the town's gonna have it, I want them to know, you know, we've been working very hard to control our costs, and so if this is a five, ten thousand dollar investment, I want the town to know and decide is it worth the investment and it's gonna cost three thousand dollars here afterwards.
And if CATV is gonna do it and they're still using students.
I don't know, I.
We'd have to change our meeting time.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to learn as much, I'll try and learn as much as I can. But we're good with the first bullet? I mean, I think the fact of the matter is.
Absolutely.
Is that this current board welcomes the transparency.
Yep.
So, and then the second.
And just Laura's point, and anybody that doesn't, because video is a sensitive thing. The law says that anybody who chooses not to be video can have that right.
I think, I think you're right, except for select board members.
Well, probably not us, but, but members of the public.
Members of the public or whatever.
And employees and stuff like that, no, I'm not worried about that.
Just need to know, so we know.
Look at our applications, that's more part of it.
Untangled mess can be untangled.
Okay, so, so I've got the action item, and, and maybe Dina and I will sit after this meeting and see if we can get ahold of the folks and get some more details, so that as the article gets raised from the floor, we're able to speak to it and, and have some information so folks know if, if we're gonna do it, do it sort of properly, if, well, there's costs associated with it. Okay? Good?
Seems good to me.
All righty, well, I promised you an hour meeting. Anything else, we've got our assignments for setting up?
Yes. See you there at.
I'll be there at nine.
Little before, so you can set up.
I'll show you on your projector.
And I got, I still need to send you.
Send me, send me what you want.
Walk. Yes, good. Covered all, covered all the things that we need to cover in the agenda?
See you at five tonight.
All righty, this meeting's over. You turn up to it.
Yep. And I assume you're not taking public comment today? Thank you.
Thursday.
Good.
Ten o'clock.